I'm going to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Barnes?
Here.
Trustee Coleman?
Here.
Trustee Grant? Trustee Jizelski?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
First item, Chief Barrett. Trustee Bell, Bright Star contract, new hire title.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, we're just trying to get ahead of the game here with this contract. So we're in the last meeting, we're like the last time. All right, Chief, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Madam Justice. All right. I know this feel like I'm bringing the same thing over and over again, but we're just making sure we are still in front of the curve, as Trustee Bell said already. So, the Bright Star contract, I know originally I had stated that I wanted to go with option one, but after further deliberation, and as we began to work on our budget, we saw that it's not feasible to go with option one. When we went with option one with the last contract, we were under the assumption that we were going to get more EMTs because of the competition around us that almost became impossible to get EMTs at the price that we were able to pay. So, with that being said, we have went, spent more on EMTs than we originally planned. And so, going into this next fiscal year, I don't want to be worried about whether we're going to be able to hire EMTs again. So, the good part about it is, I know that once, once this year is over with, we will have, in the village of our own, that's already employed with us, five EMTs. We have one in the academy now, two that's on the payroll already, and three that's going into the class, and one just has to take the national tax. So, we are already above, almost at the mark where we need to be to be able to have our own EMTs. So, we are in a good place. But, the Bright Star contract comes up May 17th, it ends May 17th of this year. So, we want to make sure that we do our, do our work properly. And so, with that being said, I would like to go with option two, which is the $420,000 a year price for Bright Star. And with that, that includes the ambulance, it includes, and I'm going to answer all of that questions, once I entitle everything that it includes. But, it includes the ambulance, includes the paramedics, includes the EMTs, include everything that we can think of, and that's an in-house ambulance. Now, the issue, I know we're going to say that then we just purchased ambulance. Yes, we did purchase ambulance, but because of the delay of purchasing that ambulance, there was an issue with getting to the Eagle system. And the lady that is in charge of the licensing and all of that has retired. Literally, she retired three days before we were able to submit our paperwork. And so, they are waiting on a new person to fulfill her spot. She originally wasn't supposed to retire until the end of this year. And so, when I spoke with the medical doctor, the medical director, he was under the impression that she was retiring later this year, but due to family issues, she had to retire early. So, we were unable to get that, that EMBO license as of now. But, rest assured, all of our paperwork has been submitted, and we're just waiting on the University of Chicago to hire someone to fulfill that spot, and we should be able to move forward with that. So, that's why, if you look at the, the contract, it does say Bright Star will provide a fully stocked ambulance, that's why it says that. Now, once we get our ambulance license, and in this contract, it also states that we are able to amend the contract at any point, and that's for both parties, and that's why it states that, so that we can do both amend that portion of the vehicle and of the, the billing portion as well. So, once we get our own EMBO and all of that, we'll be taking over the billing, as we all stated before, and have our own ambulance in place.
You ready?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Trustee Coleman? Do you have a mic right now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, under the paragraph of staffing, I'm understanding that Bright Star is to provide an advanced life support staffening. And this, this script, this kind of the parentheses, it's kind of opened in. So, the question is, is whether or not that staff is a paramedic, an advanced cardiovascular life support, and a pediatric advanced support certified? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, so anything that says advanced, that's a paramedic.
Okay.
Yes. So, that's just the language. ALS means advanced life support, which is a paramedic and an EMT, or two paramedics. Now, if you see BLS, which is basic life support, that is strictly EMTs.
And, and Bright Star is providing one advanced?
They, they are providing one paramedic and one EMT.
Thank you.
Chief, let's, let's break this down for a second, because when you say $420,000, I always have all these big silver dollars. Last year, we borrowed like $330,000 or $350,000 from, that was just to pay for the EMTs. Our EMTs cost us roughly nine grand every two months, $8,000,000 dollars a month. We pay another $15,000 or $2,000,000 for the ambulance, one paramedic, one EMT. It comes out, if I can correct my head, it's in the neighborhood of $500,000. This way, we're saving between $8,000 and $120,000 a year.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the other part to that too is, with just three EMTs, you're talking full-time hours. You don't have to provide any insurance benefits, all of that with this. So, if we, if we tried to do it on our own, we would have to, that would cost a whole lot more.
So, can we get put in this contract somewhere that we can renegotiate? Can we get our stuff from the auduction room?
It, it is in there. It says at any point, this agreement can be amended if both parties agreement is in agreement to do so. It's in the first paragraph, the last sentence.
Also, this, that last paragraph, I, they, they almost make some silent, we worked for that. More about, no political games and stuff? The questions that were asked when, because this was put in there, I know you asked the questions, it was me. And I asked questions because they weren't staffing our ambulance properly at that time. And now, that's what, hence the reason we took it to one paramedic and one EMT instead of two and two. Because at that time, they couldn't get two paramedics at a time.
So, so at that time, the whole political thing came in because they, and this is going back into, I hate going back, because I like moving forward in a positive direction. But, to go back, it was a lot of pointing fingers. You had a lot of people calling IDPH, giving false accusation. You had people doing a lot of different things. So, that's where that language came from. There was in, all, nothing in this contract has changed since the last contract. Only thing that changed was the price amount, the dollar amount.
That $47,499 was in there?
Yeah, that was in there. And this has already been submitted to the attorney. When I submitted to the attorney, she asked the same question. She said, nothing has changed but the dollar amount. She was wondering why we were doing it again. I had to explain to her that it was a one-year agreement.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief, a couple of questions. So, going back to the first page, so the agreement starts May 1st of this year. The current contract ends on May 16th or 17th. So, like, why wouldn't it start?
It will, it will start on May 17th. That's one thing that, in the correction, so you guys were given this before the attorney sent back the corrected language. So, it will be May 17th of this year when the new contract starts.
So, what else was in the corrections that are, that is not in this?
So, one thing was the, she has not, she still hasn't sent it back yet. That was a phone call that she gave me in regards to, to that information.
So, will we get the updated contract by the time we vote on this?
Correct. You will have all the changes and fixes that is needed.
So, back to my.
Correct. That, that will be changed too. That's, so this is why I'm bringing it now, right? Because the contract, our current contract doesn't end to May 17th. So, this is why I'm bringing the contract now, so that you guys can see it. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, you can point them out, and we can go back to the drawing board and fix it before May 17th. That way, we're not rushing to do a job.
All right. So, just going back to a few more questions I had. So, the part about, so the part about the ambulance, so Bright Star providing the ambulances for us?
Correct.
At the cost of $420,000, assuming that we don't get in the Eagle system, right? So, if we get into the Eagle system earlier, is that $420,000 change to a smaller amount?
So, like the last, previous contracts, the ambulance is just a given. Again, the, if you look at what we, the contract, option one, when I suggested the $275,000, that was just the, the paramedics, right? And, and they're just, that's literally just their wages. Now, to equal the $420,000, that was adding the EMTs at a salary rate of $50,000 a year, which brought it up to the $420,000. So, the ambulance is them giving it to us, as they have done in the past, is just a given.
Got you. And I think I have one more. So, I wrote, I put it, that's right here. So, in the event Bright Star ambulances, I'm on page two now, terminate this agreement for other reasons, Bright Star ambulance, I'm going to find the chief of mayor within 60 days. So, if we decide to, for whatever reason, terminate the contract, we will pay that $48,000. If Bright Star decides to terminate the contract, they don't pay anything. Or, they, you know, or there's nothing, there's no penalty or anything on their end if they decide to walk away.
So, I could tell you, that's one thing that the attorney is looking at, is the whole penalty clause.
Okay.
And, and so, she's working that out right now. So, that's one reason why it's not here today, because she's one of, she wanted to make sure that, that, that issue was taken care of.
So, are you looking to have this voted on next week, or?
No, no. Again, again, I'm just bringing it to you guys so that, so we can work in phases, so we can make sure that everything is correct. So, when May 7th, before May 17th, we have everything that is already put in place.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
So, one thing, one thing that I could tell you why, and I know, and this is for the residents and everyone that might think that this price is high, one thing that is, and I'm looking at my phone, so, there are a million towns around us that's hiring. So, everybody has to compete. So, just a couple, Paylos Fire Protection District, they're hiring right now, and they starting salary at $70,000. So, is Bensonville, their starting salary is at $68,000, and their part-time salary is $60,000 for a part-time position. So, it's, it's hard to keep up. Oak Park, $73,000, that's where they, these places are starting at. And that's why there's such a huge shortage, that's why there's a huge turnover. People are leaving places because they're looking for the money. So, they're going to other places that is paying higher, and that, that's the issue in the fire service. It's not just in our area, it's everywhere. Crete last year lost four paramedics to Lancer within the last four years. So, it, it is a doggy dog run out there. Literally, I mean, you got to compete to make sure that you can keep your folks. So, that's why their salary is at 65. They're trying to pay their paramedic 65 so that they can keep their paramedics.
Can we have a breakdown of the $420,000? When we have these numbers, can we have a breakdown of what this number entails? And because, you see, I kind of see numbers on different pages, and so, can we break this down?
So, the, the only numbers that's in this contract in regards to finance is the cost for the service and a penalty cost.
So, this $420,000, that, those are, that includes the ambulance itself and the employees? Or the?
So, the ambulance, once again, is a given. So, that's not included.
That's not.
Literally, what this $420,000 is covering is $275,000 for four paramedics, and $150,000 for three EMTs.
Okay, so, $275,000 for four paramedics, and $150,000 for three paramedics.
Yep. And when you do the, when you do the math, you'll see that is $5,000 more, they gave us a $5,000 discount. Because the real total, if you added those together, then four, it should have been $425,000.
So, there's a discount? Okay, and so, of the EMTs, you said we have one EMT that's ready to go now?
So, right now, we have two EMTs that's actually, that works for the village.
Okay, so we do have two. Those are new ones?
Uh, they've been with us for a year now.
And we're waiting for one more?
So, we waiting for a lot more. We need, in order for us to financially do this as South Village Mayor for the EMTs, we would need six EMTs.
So, okay, so we, the salary of the three EMTs is included in the $420,000?
Correct. Then that's all, that's all covered by, that's all Bright Star EMTs, that's all, that's what they.
So, will we, if we have to get three more EMTs, do we have to come up with another $420,000?
No. No. So, once, once we are in a predicament to where we have enough staff, this price would not be this at all. Because originally, when we brought this to the table, um, a year and a half ago, the EMT price came up to $130-some thousand, so it's not as much as that. So, the, the main issue is, when you, when you start talking about paying just three EMTs, you're looking at full-time hours. South Village is not able to do a full-time fire personnel at this moment, simply because we are a downstate pension town, so we will have to pay into that, which is more money. There's a lot more that plays into it, so you, we have to make sure that we're in the right place. So, with the six EMTs that were eliminated us from giving them full-time hours, and it will be straight part-time hours, which will help us in the, in the end.
And the paramedics is before, instead of this official, we go with those as well?
So, the paramedics is, we don't have to worry about the paramedics, that's straight contract out, until, God bless us, and we got our own.
Oh, uh, now, you mentioned Oak Park, Paylos, and Bensonville. Do you know the cost of the EMTs and parameters in our related surroundings, like the, the Shippensburg, Scott Island, you know, close versus as close to us?
So, I do have one from Cayman City. Cayman, everybody, Crete is $70,000. Chicago Heights, the South Chicago Heights is at $70,000, and they're making them go up on an extra $3,000 next, next cycle. So, it's, it's roughly the same ballpark.
Thank you, Chief.
Trustee Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four questions, I'll do one at a time. When you say the ambulance is a given, that means we're, we're not really paying for the ambulance?
Correct.
They're providing it to us.
Correct. We don't have any maintenance or fuel charges?
I was going to say, maintenance, fuel, other expenses, nothing?
None of that.
Okay, great, that's good. The next one is, it says, "In the event of multiple calls, Bright Star will utilize the ALS or BLS ambulances from Bright Star Transport." And that means multiple calls within South Village, right?
Correct.
So, if they get more than one call within South Village?
Correct.
Not outlying areas?
No, correct.
And they will call in ALS or BLS from Bright Star Transport, meaning something from outside the community?
Correct, so.
So, we're only going to have one here, so they'll call Bright Star in from another community?
Correct. So, Bright Star has the transport side, where they do dialysis transport, nursing home transport.
Right.
So, they're a little more heavy in this area now, since they've been around for the last three years.
Okay.
So, they now staff ambulance up in this area now. So, in the event that we get a second call, they, if they got one in the area, they will dispatch them to that call, instead of going, instead of going to mutually calls.
That's good. Response time, Bright Star will agree to have normal municipality EMS response times of seven minutes or under. Have you had any experience with Bright Star, experience with response times?
No.
Any negative experience, great. And, one more question. As far as the termination, in the event of both parties coming to a mutual agreement to terminate disagreement, there will be no penalty to South Village. In the event South Village has defaulted on payments, Bright Star can terminate disagreement without a 60-day written notice. Can we be a little bit more specific about defaulting on payments? Is it 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? Because, you know, sometimes we don't pay as timely as, as 30 days. Specifically, what does that mean?
So, they, they are aware of our 30, it's a 30 to 45 day net?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're aware of that. So, it's not the first time we miss a payment, they're gone. That's not what that includes. This is the same language that's been in all the contracts, and the 60 days was actually one that we all came up with either last contract or a contract before last, to make sure that it's more than enough time to get a replacement.
The 60 days here is, they will terminate disagreement without 60-day written notice. But, I think we talked about being more specific as to the timeline of the late payments.
Correct.
It's not in here.
So, it, it was three months.
Right, but it's not in.
It was a 90-day. I will make sure of that.
Yeah, if you can include that, that's all I'm asking. I know we talked about it last time.
Yes.
It got excluded in here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure brought some water.
I got, I got one more, Chief. So, back to the original start date of the contract to be in May 17th, the middle of the month.
Uh-huh.
So, what amount will we be invoiced for the month of May?
It would be pro-rated.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so, just want to make sure that, you know, that first invoice will be based on, that half due?
Yeah. So, maybe, we already talked about it.
Okay.
And will be a pro-rated amount.
Thank you.
Trustee Williams just said that Bright Star is providing an amb, I thought we were buying our own ambulance.
All right, so, so.
Until it passes inspection, we have to use this.
Yeah, so, once again, yes, when we, when we did the, when we had this agreement to get the ambulance, there was a delay, like almost a three-month delay. And because of the, the delay, it caused us to get the paperwork turned in at a later date. And by the time we turned it in, the young lady that was in charge of approving and getting us our license had retired at the time. Correct.
Any other questions? All right, Chief, when you get this new agreement over, if you three Rick, you get it to us, and, hopefully before, because you said there's a deadline, so hopefully before the end of next month.
Yeah, so, it would be, so what I'm looking to do, that's why I brought it now, what I'm looking to do is to bring it up again at the, another committee meeting in April, to be voted on at the last, the last.
Board meeting?
Yeah, the last board meeting in April. That way, we have no, no issues.
Trustee, do you, do you, do you have a reason why? Can you tell anything else?
I don't have a reason why. I know one thing was, we had to wait for the attorney to look over all of that paperwork, and then get back, and then she was working on things at that time, two other things. I think that was around the time where she had like five or six things that was under review, so that's one. I'm not sure of all the other ones, so.
All right. Moving on to the next item, new hire title.
All right. So, one, I would like to first thank you guys for approving my Chief of Administration, David Klinger. This has been one amazing week. Our morale has definitely switched for the better. Things are moving smoothly. He's grasping the information very quickly, so that is a plus. We are working on a lot of many different things. What I'm asking today is to just change the title of the position, and that's nothing, no extra money, no extra benefits, no extra anything. All we really is just changing the title from Chief Administration to Deputy Chief. We once had a Deputy Chief, but that position was laid off back in 2014, and, and that was due to budgetary issues. Now, I'm looking to bring it back with nothing extra, no more money, no more benefits. I just wanted to stress that, that everything is the same, we're just changing the title.
Any questions? You have a question?
So, Chief, you said, no more money, no more benefits, that benefits part.
No, I'm saying, we're not asking to add anything to this. Everything that is in place right now, with the title that he has now, will stay and remain the same.
Got you. No, I'm saying, the benefits part. So, as you currently right now, at this moment, qualify all those benefits. I thought this is a part-time?
It is.
Okay, so, there are no benefits?
Correct.
Oh, I'm saying, you said more benefits, and I just want to make sure, when you say more benefits, I, you said there'd be no more benefits.
So, the only thing, so the only thing he get right now is the sick time man. That's what I mean by the more benefits.
Got you.
That's what I was referring to.
Got you, thank you.
Now, if we change the title, we have no ordinance for that?
No. We, we already had this position in place. It was never taken away, it was never dismantled, it was just, the person was laid off.
So, we do have an ordinance right now for Chief of, I'm sorry, for Deputy Chief?
Correct.
And will, will the job description be the same?
It's the same thing. So, pretty much what the Chief of Administration title was resembling was the title of a Deputy Chief.
So, like officially, should we go ahead and create that same job description with a separate new title, just so we can have it for our records?
Already done.
Okay.
So, you said that, that the resolution or the ordinance is already in place? But, we have to change, we have to vote on to change that position to make it Deputy Chief, correct?
That, I'm not sure. I, I didn't think we.
That's what they, but you have to.
Okay, they, yes.
Because if you hired on the Chief of Administration, we'd have to vote, because if not, then, so we'll have to put that on the agenda to vote to have the position.
That's fine.
Title that's Deputy.
The title, right. Just make sure everybody knows that I want nobody coming back there. There's no extra money and no extra benefits. So, you was going to ask about when this ordinance was done? So, this, the, the. I have not. This ordinance has been in place since the beginning. So, since the fire department has been founded, there has always been a Deputy Chief title.
Now, what is Chief Myers' title?
He's the Assistant Chief.
Assistant Chief, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep getting those mixed up. Okay, Assistant Chief Deputy, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Trustee Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what you're going to do is the job description that we just approved last time. There was a salary amendment that had to be made to that, a couple hundred dollars, and then they're going to, you're going to revise that job description to be that title with the same duties that we approved for the assistant.
Correct.
Basically, all it is, is changing the name.
Yeah.
And then we'll have on file the job description, correctly titled with the duties of.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Court Tuesday, I will have it to you tonight before I leave work. Trustee Bell?
Deputy Chief title would go back to around the time when Hawkins first got sick. So, Thornhill would be your first Assistant Chief, so Deputy, I'm sorry. So, it's about 91, 90, 91. Yeah. I'm sure it's 91, because I, I remember the ceremony. Yeah.
Okay. So, that will be. Okay, so, that will be on the. Well, if his title was being changed. Yeah, well, he, he, and he does carry a card, right? He doesn't carry a card?
An ID card?
No, I mean, a, uh, a, I mean, a yellow card.
Yeah, he, yeah, he does need to be sworn in or whatever.
He has to be sworn in, yeah. Yeah, so, he has to be sworn in under that.
Correct.
Title. Anything else? Okay, Chief?
Thank you, I appreciate it always. Stay blessed and safe.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Mr. Cliff Taylor. I guess he's bringing us, and he got it with him. The, um, new proposals and the recommendation of which one we, which one we should, I don't know. People just gave the one first, many times again, that one? I said, people just gave the one first, many times again?
He just doesn't have the, I think.
Huh?
He hasn't got all the steps in today.
Oh, yeah, what it is, okay.
Alright, good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Honorable Trustees, residents. Uh, we are back at it again. We were at the last meeting during the renewal for this year. Of course, uh, we got here with a pretty significant increase. We're still in the process of negotiating and trying to see if there was some way we could try to get some relief off of this renewal. Um, so, what we tried to do was go back to some of the carriers, because our limits have changed on our SIR. And sometimes with the carriers, nowadays, see that they're not ensuring that the hundred thousand SIR or could be even higher, there's a possibility that they wouldn't entertain it. Didn't get too many buyers. We were also waiting, if you remember, on a law enforcement carrier that we were gonna look at to see if we could get the law enforcement carrier to come in, take over the law enforcement lines of coverage, see if that would give us some regular relief on liberty, uh, liberty mutual. Unfortunately, it does not give us enough savings that would justify, um, making that move, I'm going to say. Um, what it did do, which is a glimmer of hope, but it, the glimmer kind of got swallowed with the pricing, the law enforcement carrier will match our current SIR or even take it down to a hundred thousand. But that comes with a significant cost. So, bottom line is, the law enforcement carrier, they will entertain. They will be willing to come in, but it won't produce any savings. So, we're kinda back where we were at the last meeting, where if we take the increase with the increase in the SIRs, that would be that option one. And that's what will put us at that six hundred and ninety-one thousand, with all lines being at two hundred thousand, with the exception of employee benefits being at three fifty and law enforcement at five. Option two takes all the other lines at three fifty, with law enforcement at five. You get about roughly not even a ten thousand dollar savings. Option three and four is what we added with that law enforcement carrier. And if you see in option three, you can see where law enforcement, that SIR goes down to a hundred thousand. But that, you see what the cost is at, at the bottom there. So, they gave us, gave us the option, didn't give us the pricing, so that's kinda where we're at. Like I said, we can visit all of the carriers to see if we can get one to entertain. And this is kinda just where we're at, at the marketplace this year. Are there any questions?
Trustee Bell?
What would be your recommendation, Chief? Excuse me? What's coming your recommendation?
Well, while I would love, if the pricing was there, I would love option three. The, and, and reason being, from an insurance standpoint, if we can get law enforcement back down to a hundred thousand dollar SIR, it puts us back in the ballgame when, let's say, next year, we have an issue again, now we're starting at a hundred thousand dollar market, and we're not where we're at at the three fifty or the five hundred. But, I just don't see the pricing there. I mean, eight hundred grand, that's, that's pretty significant. And so, that comes down to the village's budget, right?
Yeah.
And if that, if that's feasible. Um, option one and two, they're both at half a million. Um, the thing about a SIR though, you never really pay it all at once. If you have a lawsuit, it's, it's all the time, right? You're paying your lawyers, you're paying your fees, and you may pay twenty thousand here, forty here, fifty here. So, you end up getting to that half a million, but it's not like it's, boom, it's right there until you get to settlements or what happened, what happened. So, um, SIR is a kind of a prologue thing, so to speak. So, if it's about savings, we stay with that option one, keep the other lines down at the two hundred and three fifty. Um, if it's about getting that SIR down to a hundred for law enforcement, then we, then we're looking at option three. That, that comes with a significant increase.
Any other, Trustee Wade?
What would you suggest, Mr. Mayor? What's your option?
I'm, I'm really looking at, um, number one. Um, there's a little bit more, but I think we, some of these things that we, we're looking at, like automobile and everything like that, we're soft, we're soft, I'm sure it doesn't matter anyway.
That's, that's pretty, that's what this is. So, when we see SIR, which is, it looks like a deductible. They call it a self-insured retention because of the amount of the, of the deductible. So, yes, you are partially self-funded, yes.
So, if we, you know, if, if, if we have an accident, uh, something happens in the vehicle, we basically, unless it's over certain amount, we have to pay it anyway.
Right.
So, that was one of the things, and, uh, and you're right about the law enforcement, but with, with, and I'm glad you did explain to them, it's not like we didn't wanna pay them or the insurance company's gonna pay them right away. It's gonna be over time.
It's gonna be over time, yeah.
But it does look good the following year, when you try to, uh, do what we're doing right now, that last year. It's basically like credit, I mean, it's, last year, you, you know, you were here, now you're, you're down here and you have to be down there for this year. So, yes, I like number, I, I do like option number one.
Option one. And, and some, uh, I've been telling a lot of other municipal clients too, when these SIRs rise up, if there's any way, I know budgets are tight all over, where you can almost have that loss fund buffer, where you're putting your budget and putting a little bit in this buffer all the time. So, if a major lawsuit comes, you have a loss fund.
Right.
Safety net sitting over to the side, whether that be two hundred grand, three hundred grand. Where it's sitting to the side, so when these claims come, it's not just hitting you directly like that, you already got a fund, it's kinda set to the side, and you can start pulling off of that to put into the loss fund. Because again, any of these lawsuits, they, they, I mean, claims or settlements or anything, whatever affects the SIR, you're paying usually over time, not one big. Soon as a lawsuit comes, you're not automatically, I'm paying a half a million dollars. So, from a budgeting standpoint, that, having a buffer, if, if you can do it.
Any other questions? So, um, well, that means that we, uh, well, I'd like to have this put on. And I put on, we're gonna wait and vote on it a little bit, we're gonna have a, um, short special meeting. So, uh, we'll look at option number one.
If there's no more questions, again, thank you all, and thank you for allowing me to serve the village, the Saw Village. Um, it's always a pleasure. Um, and of course, we'll always do the work every year to go out and make sure that we're doing the best for the village. So, appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item. Um, Madam Clerk, we have the storage requirements.
Exactly. And I heard, you know, this is a beautiful building that we're in. It's absolutely beautiful. But can you imagine? Can you imagine this beautiful building with absolutely no room to file anything? The clerk's office, who houses all of our records and everything? If you would go into my office, and some of you do, and I don't even apologize to you anymore for being in the office with all of those papers. Then I have things in boxes. We have no filing syst- no more filing cabinets. We have no place to put filing cabinets. So, therefore, a number of our records are not as secure as they need to be. I mentioned it a while back, when I asked if we could go to a system where your minutes and your meeting materials would be online. And that's when we offered to provide you tablets or laptop. That would decrease a whole lot of the paper that we have, a need for storage. Since that, you know, I think it's just time to start looking at what our options are. Because if we do not go with using technology to store our files, then another system still requires technology. And that is scanning all of those documents, some of them that we cannot get rid of. And some of our documents are from nineteen fifty-seven. And they're housed and taking up a whole lot of room as well. But if we use that option to scan everything, which a lot of systems, a lot of municipalities are going in that direction at this point, it requires labor. It's gonna require at least one or two people to come in to assist with scanning all of that in and getting that whole new system in place. So, I thought that I would bring it to you so we can mull it over before we start looking at our budget. But, in our budget, we are going to have to entertain storage. Over the weekend, I looked at the fireproof file cabinets. And just one fireproof cabinet is thirteen hundred dollars. But one file cabinet will not meet our needs at this point in time. If you were to go into our fire safe vault, you would see boxes upon boxes upon boxes of files on the floor, on shelves. Now, that's not all from the clerk's office. A lot of that also includes the finance department. That's where they keep all of their records and everything. There's a little small, um, closet right outside where we have our executive board meetings. And so, at one point in time, finance department was putting some of their things in boxes there. Uh, the amount of space that's in there is negligible. So, we really need to look at options of how do we maintain the records of this village. And, Mr. Mayor, I think that I've said it all.
Good. Thank you.
Um, I did, you're welcome. Um, you did talk to me about that, and, um, yes, we're gonna have to, because we're coming to a point now where it's just, we need to either change what we're doing, because paper's not gonna last forever, and we got a lot of things that are in paper. And, um, it needs to, uh, be put on hard drive or zip drive or something. So, someone's gonna have to actually do that. And then we have to have the space. And so, I told, uh, Madam Clerk, there's some things that may need to get a grant to change some of the configurations here inside Village Hall. There's a couple of places that we don't even use that could probably be changed or, uh, made into a storage area. So, that's something that's, uh, that we need to look at. But again, where do we get the money? That's the whole thing. Everything comes down to money. So, it means we have to find grants or something to do some construction, because what we have right now is not adequate for what we need to have going forward. But in the meantime, uh, and it's right now, those cabinets that you were talking about may be one of the reasons, may be one of the things, but you still have to have somebody to actually go through the boxes that you have, transcribe, scan it, put it on hard, or put it something. Cause right now, I see it building up, not just in the vault room, in your office too, so. Uh, and then someone's gonna have to, uh, scan those things. It's gonna take, it's gonna take quite a bit. And someone's gonna have to be there, show them what they have to do at the beginning. So, that was one of the things you brought that we need to really look at. Cause right now, the space that we have, or the space that's allotted for right now is not gonna be adequate in the next year. I can say that right now. Question? Trustee Coleman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, um, Madam Clerk, have we considered, uh, some off-site storage facilities? One of which being, an example, let's say, Iron Mountain. Uh, I understand they have, well, at, when I was working, they have a system, a retrieval system, whereas, provides you give them a particular code or whatever, they can retrieve it in case you need it. So, Iron Mountain would be Iron Mountain, it's an off-site storage facility that most law firms say they, they use.
Trustee, um, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. So, we are, um, we will be willing to take all of the storage and store it on a, in, in a computer instead of having paper. That is, that is an option?
Yes.
So, can, can we talk to our IT people to see if our system?
It's just a matter of taking the paper and scanning it and putting it on hard drive. IT would, they would have anything to do with that except if they have a, uh, we need a scanner. And a person has to sit there and do that. I'm not, I don't wanna pay IT to come and do something like that. That's too, too much. But we do have, there's ways to do it in the machines.
Mm-hmm.
And then, like I said, they can scan it and put it on jump drive or whatever, and then you can store it from that point.
And we will have to worry about paper.
But that's gonna eliminate paper.
Right, so.
I mean, we have paper now, but it, and, and just like we have the meetings, oh, we'd have a scan and put it on.
Right. Cause he was, uh, Trustee Coleman was mentioning off-storage, which of course is gonna cost money. So, I think we can, we should be able to find a solution from what we did to scan.
Well, the hardest part is, you know what you said, is one, actually has to sit down, take all those things out of the box.
Mm-hmm.
Go through it all and scan us, that's, that's quite a yoke, that's, it is. But it has to be done.
It has to be done, so.
Has to be done, so.
We have to do it.
Yes. Trustee Wade?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we purge at all? I mean, I know some documents we have to keep forever, but do we purge?
There are a number of documents that we have to keep for an extended period of time.
And we're not there yet. However, there is a program with the state under, um, state regulations for retaining records as well as destroying. If you can remember, I'm not certain if you were with us then, but I had been in communication with that office numerous times, and they never followed through with coming out to do the needed audit. And it would be very difficult even at this point for someone to come and do an audit with what we have right now. And it's in no particular order. And keep in mind, I'm, I'm not only talking about the clerk's office at this point. I'm talking about overall records, finance department. I'm not certain what HR looks like at this point in time. But any of us that have to maintain paper records would probably be feeling a little ouch at this point, because we've been in this building since, what, two thousand seven, two thousand eight? But from my understanding, when they moved from the old Village Hall, which is the police station now, they didn't bring all of the documents over. So, you said they didn't?
They did, uh.
Okay.
There's, there's thousands, there's thousands, um, boxes in the police station, not in that vault, but it's a move off the sides.
Downstairs, yeah.
So, I, I think that it would behoove us to bring us together, to bring our records and files together and to create an organizational structure that is not a temporary fix, but one that can last us indefinitely. I'm not certain what that is. We may have to continue to grow as we go, but. But right now, what we have is not working for us.
Any other questions? Trustee Bell.
Can, can we use the high school kids for that job? You know, when the, when the, um, interns and stuff come in or summer help?
You know, I.
Service hours and stuff?
High security.
I would recommend a professional to come in and for that professional to vow, um, to sign a contract, a disclosure contract, where what records they see and encounter is not shared with anyone.
Nata Pluck, which is something that we have to look into. Not just to say we have to actually do it. And that's something we have to put in the budget for next year too.
Exactly. But since we're talking on this subject, I, I would like to know if the trustees would be amenable to revisiting the concept of me putting everything in a cloud-based system, and that requires a contract with the company. But put it in a cloud-based, all of your documents and everything will come directly to you. It would be in a, and the older files depends on how long we decide to go back. They would be in a library that's online. So you can go back and look at and research whatever you need without going through a whole lot of papers. I think that would help us moving forth. But then we still have to look at what's behind us as well.
So you're talking about bringing the contractor or company out to?
Exactly.
We can have, yeah, we can bring them out.
We can either bring someone and let them do a presentation in terms of what they can offer and everything.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll do that.
Trustee Bell.
I know, um, I did my, I finally did my webinar with Civic Plus. And Civic Plus is, is prob, possibly, quite possibly, can create us in, in the system to be able to store these files. Their, their, the presentation was really incredible. And it's, uh, the way they set things up, it could be housed in its own top, complete area. Even if we have to scan, is that something that we could do? You know, as, as trustees?
I think that it's very, very labor-intensive.
You said, you said we could do it, you mean actually do it?
Yeah.
It's still going to be a person. You're going to have to have someone to actually, it's a lot of, it's a lot of file. It's a lot. But if we have a company to come out, they can do, but they can let us know what they can do once we get the scanning process. So they can come out and do that. Ultimately, it's going to take a person taking this, so that's what, that, that's got to happen. It's not going to be the other way. It is very challenging. Yes, trustee Williams?
I've been trying to find the name of a company that, um, I knew of in the past, but I can't find it offhand, but I'll get together with clerk. They actually come and pick up your boxes and take it to their site. And they, they actually organize it and give you a tutorial of how to operate the system online. Um, I'm going to send you the information. I'm sure I'm going to find it at some point.
Years ago when I brought it forward, I had a company there.
Right.
Our company is getting caught up, just like, you know, she mentioned Civic Plus. Well, Civic Plus has taken over many of them.
Yes, they, they combined and, yeah.
Yeah, so Civic Plus may have, I think that they did send me something about a meeting management software.
Right, right.
And letting it software.
But they can go back, the company that I was talking about, they actually come and pick up your boxes, or you drop them off to them. They do all the work on, on their, yeah, right. And I mean, you, depending on how much you want to invest in it, like from today moving back, and then we can come up with a system from today moving forward. But I will, I will look to get that information out of my records and let you know.
Thank you.
What you described, trustee Williams, is what Iron Mountain would do for the.
They're one, they're one, but one specifically for municipalities. I just don't, I can't think of the name off the top of my head. But I will get back with the clerk on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate all of the trustees' input on this and your understanding of the urgency and the need that we take care of the business of the village. That concludes me.
Thank you. Um, moving forward, because we have another meeting, I'm going to ask that we do the executive session at the end of the special board meeting. So we keep things going, moving. So at this particular time, I'll ask for public comments. Public comments, we direct it to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the benefits of South Village municipality. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up for three minutes and may not engage in debate time regardless of rebuttal. Uh, please come up, step up to the mic and give us your name before you start. Got mic? Because the mic's seen that mic is working.
It just needs to be turned on.
Trustee.
David Fields. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees in residence of South Village. Mr. Mayor, my question goes back to the conversation that was taking place with Chief Barry concerning Wright Star's contract. In their contract, one of the things that he was mentioning is that if there was a late, if the payments was late. My question is, why would the payments be late? And if so, what steps would be taken to prevent that from happening? The third part is, on the 215th East of Jeffrey on the south side, that has, that area over there has become an illegal dumping site. It's right down School Street from Wagon School. If anyone had flowed down there, you'd probably seen the mess and the trash. So we're just wondering what could be did about this and how do we stop it? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hold until the green light comes.
Is it on now? Okay. My name is Larry Satt. Please. Good evening, everyone, Larry Satt. Uh, I also have a concern with the contract that was being spoke about with regard to keeping staff. Because if we're paying only fifty thousand dollars a year and everybody around us is paying fifteen to twenty-three thousand dollars more a year, how do we plan to keep staff? You got to look at that, at that contract. Also, Mr. Mayor, I want, I still have some concerns that I wasn't satisfied with the answers that I got regarding the seventy-eight thousand dollars. I never got an answer, because you said you didn't know any. So I want to know what are we, what are we doing with regard to getting those things resolved? Because there was a contract presented in the last hour on the termination of Dr. Jones, and nobody knows where that contract came from. I'm pretty sure you did present it, you're not that guy. But I believe that someone made the contract up. Since the contract was proven to be invalid, then it was a falsified contract. The clerk's name wasn't on it. So she didn't know about it. Where'd that contract come from? And if somebody's giving false documents to you, we need to know who that is. So I would like to know if you know where you got that contract from. Also, with regard to bank recs. If we're not getting bank recs, we cannot be doing audits. I, I know that, all of us know that. Audits are not being done if we don't have a bank recs. And if we're paying somebody seventy-five thousand dollars a year that's supposed to be doing the bank recs, what are we going to do to straighten that out? Because the village is losing an upwards of, you could say, millions of dollars in just state grants, because we don't qualify for state grants if we don't get our audits done on time. So I would like to know from you, sir, do you have any contingency plan or a plan to straighten these matters out?
Okay. To the first answer, um, the, that's within any contract that we have. Sometimes they meet over, the invoice may come after we've had a council payable meeting and, or it doesn't get to us in time. We have to actually, we don't pay on, in other words, we wait until the, until the invoice comes in before we pay. We don't pay. No municipality pays on, okay, well, we know this is what it's going to be, because we don't know what the amount will be. So that being said, we try, we don't sit here and try to make it seem as if we're going to pay them late. No, we don't. Soon as we get the invoice, we try to get it on to the next, um, billing cycle and pay it then, unless there's no money. And if there's no money to pay, then they're quite nasty. A lot of times, we pay the priorities first, which would be our payroll and, and basically our connected to payroll. So that's our first priority is to pay payroll. If there's money left over, yes, we pay our council payable, we pay our bills. But I'm not going to pay bills and then come back and say I can't pay payroll. That's never been a thing for me to do since I've been mayor. Payroll's always been first. Not saying that we're going to have a problem with paying the other council payable and the other, the invoices coming in. It's just that I think since I've been elected official, they've happened twice. We actually have, we didn't have enough money to pay all of our bills at the time, but we still made sure that we paid payroll. I don't think anyone since I've known has ever missed a paycheck due to the lack of funding. So, so that part, um, we're going to make sure. And then, and then also with the sixty days, that's why we asked for ninety. Because we usually ask for ninety because of a lot of different things. As we did this last two months, when we didn't get our money in from the state for taxes, we had to hold back on some things, and we had to wait. Uh, because as I stated, payroll is number one. And so when we did get it in fusion, when we was able to vote some money out, we take it from other areas to pay the other bills, we did that. And sometimes, as you know, it takes, takes a couple of weeks, or at least a week and a half to, uh, to make that happen. Glad you told me about, I'll get on top of that. Two hundred, two hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, two-one-five East, two-hundred-and-fifteen East of Jeffrey, a dumping site. How do you stop it? Should I put someone there twenty-four seven? But I, I'm glad you said something, because now we can, we can, um, look more into it. Not saying I have a person sitting there, but we'll look more into it and we can find out if anyone gets a license plate. Please bring that in to us. Then, uh, you see someone dumping something. You don't have to go out there and say anything to them. As a matter of fact, I would advise them, get the license plate. Get it to us and let us take care of it. The Wright Star staff, it was seventy-eight thousand dollars. So I'm still trying to find out. I'm glad you said that, because I still haven't found out anything. From the seventy-five thousand, I've been asking, and I'm going to continue to ask where it came from, what is, what does it entail? And, um, what, what is this? I mean, I know the time it was made. Sometimes comments are made without any backup, so. And I haven't heard anything, but I will look into that. And as far as resolution from Dr. Jones, um, be resolved. So where did it come from? Uh, I don't know. I wish I did, because people put things out all the time. So, um, that is still under investigation. Some things involved in that is still under investigation, that much I'll say now. And then the bank recs, bank recs always have to be done. To say that one person is doing them is not. We did have one person a long time ago, a couple of years ago, just to do bank recs for that one time. But that too did have to be, because they didn't do them all. We have a lot. They did quite a few of them, but still, we still have to have some more put on. So right now, until we can get the bank recs and all of them taken care of, well, I was under, had a meeting that the auditors won't even start until April anyway. Hopefully by that time, we can have things ready for them to get the audit started. But right now, they're not. I'm going to just tell you that right now. Everything is not in place to make that happen. But as we speak, they're trying to do that. So when they do, because the auditors, when they come in, they want everything there. And if it's not there, then they have to wait and put you on the back burner. They'll tell you today, okay, we're ready to get started. If you say, well, we're not quite ready, well, call us in two more weeks. So I'm not saying that happens too many times. And that being said, um, I'll ask, well, comments by the trustees. Did you guys want to comment now? If you want to comment at the end of the special meeting. Okay, so at that time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to have the recess and we're going to come back.
You're going to have, you're having a regular special meeting.
Right. You want to come back to this meeting, you have to ask me, right?
No, only thing I want to do is, um.
Can't adjourn this meeting and come back?
No, no, but coming back, I'm going to have, I'm going to put the executive session at the end of the special meeting. I'm not going to come back to this one. I'm just going to put the executive session at the end. I'll ask, okay. It should have been, it should have been. I don't see why it would be a problem to just have the executive, I mean, I'm sorry, have the comments at the end of the regular meeting.
All I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, was in part that had executive session.
Yes.
Part of our regular meeting, we just recess between you and then something, we just, we have to take care of recess. That's what I was asking. That's an option. Or it's like a mandatory agenda of this special meeting.
Okay, I'll ask for amendment. I'll, I'll take a vote and ask for an amendment to address the journal comments from the board trustees and the mayor after the special board meeting, which was starting immediately afterwards. I'll ask for a motion for that.
After the session, after that.
After the, that discussion. I'll ask for a motion to amend and to... I'm asking to amend, I'm sorry, to insert into the, um, special board meeting the comments from the trustees and the mayor. To put it in, in other words, to... At the end of the executive session, but to, that's another thing. I don't know if we can. I guess we can, though. It shouldn't be a problem, it shouldn't be a problem to, uh... That's what I was going to try to do. That's what I was, that's, that's what I said. Nata Pluck. That's what I asked. I asked to have this meeting adjourned. And we would, um, bring, or we would bring back the executive, at the executive session, question and comment on the board trustees and the mayor. I'll ask for a motion to do that before I ask for an adjourn. All I want to do, all I want to do is adjourn this meeting and go to the next meeting. And then in the next meeting, that's, that's what I did at first. But then I got. But then I got all this. Yeah. Did you guys understand? I'm going to ask for an adjournment of this meeting. At the next meeting, I'll ask, you know, to amend that, to amend that agenda and to include question and comments, yes. That's what I tried to do. Again, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Bell. Any questions? Madam clerk.
We made a motion to adjourn, but which would adjourn the meeting? But on the special, the agenda for the special meeting has no area for comments from trustees and mayors.
That's why I'm going to, at the onset, when we open the meeting, I'm going to ask to amend the agenda to include comments from the trustees and the mayor. So, that a motion on the floor.
Yes, I'm just going to make a comment and we can proceed. But I just want to make a note. Normally, when you have a special meeting agenda, you're supposed to stay on a special meeting itinerary.
Yeah.
Okay? So, I, that's why I'm not going to vote in favor of this adjournment. I just want to make sure that's on record because special meetings are supposed, everything involving that special meeting, including your comments, should pertain to the special meeting agenda, which would have made it easier if you would just recess and then go to the special meeting, adjourn that special meeting, come back and re, come out of recess. But however you want to handle it, Mayor, I just want to say that's normally the procedure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam clerk, please call the row. Yes, I love it. Okay, you have four no's, two yes', so the meeting is not adjourned. You have four no's and two yes', so the meeting is not adjourned. So, only thing we can do is call for a recess of this meeting, which I will call for a recess of this meeting. I ask for a motion to recess. Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Bell. Any questions? Madam clerk. Yes. Okay, motion carried. We're in recess right now and, um... I am going to, um, call the special meeting to order. Your staff, we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, would you please call it? All right, public comment, all question and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on matters pertaining to the agenda item only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may I engage in debate, comment, replies, or rebuttal? I'll answer all responses to the questions once all public comments have been concluded.
Hello, everyone again, this is Mayor Zab. Uh, Mayor, I asked this question and it didn't get answered. I don't think you had time to ask because there was other things going on. With regard to, uh, the finance director's position.
This is...
I know, I know, but I never got an answer for it last time. So, I would like to just ask, it's been five weeks, why hasn't that job been posted? Let's just compare. And when will it be posted? That's all.
Any other questions? As I stated before, it's only agenda items only and the agenda is for the, uh, commercial insurance program with InsureSource. So, any other questions? Move down to, um, new business. I'll ask for a motion to... I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proposal for the village assault bill's commercial insurance program with Insure, with InsureSource Option One in the amount of six hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Moved by trustee Bell. Seconded by trustee Zesinski. Got any questions? Six hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars each. Uh, trustee Zesinski. Madam clerk, please call the row. Motion's carried. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Zesinski, seconded by trustee, um, Williams. Madam clerk, would you please call the row. Motion carried. Um, we will re-adjourn, um, these committee meetings. Um, reconvene. Okay. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to reconvene our board, I'm sorry, committee meeting at the hall. Moved by trustee Bell.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Zesinski. Got any questions? Madam clerk. Okay, we left off with general comments by the trustees and the mayor. I'll start with trustee Zesinski. Okay, trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next community development meeting will be Wednesday, March twenty-ninth at eleven o'clock a.m. And the SOC talk will be ready by April first and hopefully out for distribution by April first. There's a lot of events happening for Easter throughout the community and around the surrounding communities. So, we want to make sure that it's out timely. So, please look for that on April first and we'll have it at the village hall and the library in print. And hopefully, it'll be on the website by the first. That's going to be our goal. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next committee meeting will be on March, Monday, March twenty-seventh at seven P.M. here. Um, also, um, just want to, just want to comment on the position of finance director. And just, just to mention how important it is and and I feel I'm concerned to the point where I've also sent you, Mr. Mayor, uh, an email asking when will it be posted? And so, um, just waiting on an answer, sir, when will it be posted? I think the village needs to know. It's been five weeks as one of the residents commented, so. Uh, the sooner we know, the sooner we can look forward to it. And that, that position is sorely needed. Grants and a lot of funding hangs in the balance of that. And that concludes my comments.
Trustee Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I want to make sure I understand that bank recs obviously are one of the key pieces of, uh, work that needs to be done in order to even proceed or start the audit. Is that correct, Mayor? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
And we have a senior accountant, I think you were saying, that is responsible for making sure these bank recs were in order, in order for us to do our audit?
I didn't say that.
Well, so who's responsible for bank recs in order for us to do our audits?
The finance department.
So...
No, not the finance director. Are we going to go through this or we? I mean, this is comments, you guys, you're going to ask. I mean, I'm here every day, but no, the finance department is responsible for bank recs, not just one person.
So, the bank recs are being done now?
It should be, yes.
Is anyone in charge of making sure it's done?
The person that you had in charge, you no longer have no more. So, they are, they are doing, they are completing the bank recs as we say. I don't know exactly who they have on there, no. But they are doing the bank recs.
Do you know?
Personnel in the, in the finance department is doing it.
So, E-H-R? Well, I'm just, I'm just...
E-H-R is in the resources.
Right, so I'm asking...
She has nothing to do with that finance, the finance department.
So, what does our finance department consist of right now? Because, because the director is no longer here. So, who, who is our finance department now?
We have several people that are in the department right now.
Can you tell me who they are? I'm just, I'm, these are questions that's coming up and I'm trying to understand. So, who is our finance department? The directors?
Four people, one, two, three, four. Four people that's in the, uh, department now.
We have four?
Four people, yes. You have a senior accountant, you have a council table and, um, receivable. You have two people that work up front.
Okay, so that's all four of you. So, all, so, so when you say our finance department, so you're saying all four of those people are actually working on the bank recs?
No, I said that the finance department is working. And which one of those people that are actually doing it right now, I do not know.
Does anybody know?
The finance department knows, it's definitely there.
Well, what I'm trying to understand is if, if the bank recs are the key, vital to us starting the audits, shouldn't we know who's doing the bank recs?
Because there's, there's different people that do different things, is what I'm trying to say. You may have a person doing one thing and they ain't doing something else tomorrow. There's no specific duty in the finance department. There's no specific job. Everything is financed. You walk the department, it's in the finance.
So, how are we going to, how are we going to get our bank recs done if we don't know who's doing them?
Trustee, uh, I know what you're doing and stuff, but when you, when they, when it was voted that you got rid of the finance director?
No, but, but, no, well, well...
Right now, what we're trying to do is they're trying to make, make it happen, which they are.
But I'm saying, who is trying to make it happen? No one knows who's trying to make it happen.
The finance, I'm, I answered your question was the finance department. Now, which person is actually taking it upon themselves to do the finance?
Now, which person is actually taking it upon themselves to do the finance, I mean, to do the bank recs? I do not know.
No one is, no one is spoken to you, or you haven't...
I told that, they, okay. Bank recs are done by the finance department. Which person is actually on them right now? No, I don't. I'm not in charge of that part.
So do we have any idea when they will be done, since we don't have...
No, we don't. No, I don't have an idea. No, I don't. Because you, nobody, no one would know how, when they're gonna be done, because there's, there's quite a few of them.
Okay, so what, you, you said that something was gonna be done in April.
I said that...
We should have it, possibly have it done by April.
Trustee, can you, can you come see, if you wanna come see, or you wanna do this out here, it's up to you. But you can come see, I can show you, and I can tell you whatever it is you need to know. So is that part of your question? And is that part of your question, too? I, I mean, I'm here. But if we're gonna do this out here like this, it's not gonna happen.
I'm, I'm not doing, I'm not doing...
I'm interrogating, that I'm not doing that part.
Mayor, I'm not doing anything. They says that we could ask questions and comments. I'm just, I'm just only asking from what I heard you say.
Okay.
That in April, by April, we should probably have the bank, bank recs done.
We should.
So then I just ask, who's doing the bank recs?
The finance department.
And then I ask who, in the finance department?
I don't know that.
And then I ask why. We don't know who's doing the bank recs, if that's the most important part of doing audits.
Okay.
That's, I just had a question.
I'm, I'm, I tried to answer your, your question, and that's what, that's the answer. The finance department is actually doing the bank recs. Who in that department is doing every, I don't know. No, I don't. But I know that they're being taken care of, so I don't know what person it is. Is that, is that all of your question? Okay, well, I'm, I gotta say, I see you come in all the time, and why don't you stop by the office, and maybe I can, and, um, show you, or ask that particular day, who is actually doing it, because I don't know who is doing it that particular day.
And the thought never came to my mind, except today, when you all started talking about it. That's the only time I even thought about that.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just listening to everyone's...
You could, you could come in and ask, you, you ask questions anyway, so you come in and ask, you got a problem with that? But to tell you exactly who's doing it right now, I don't know. You better all, your comments. Okay, you have, you have, I mean, really, you have any more comments? Anything else? I mean, just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm... I'm being as forthless I possibly can. If I knew who it was, I'd be that person's name, but that person may not be the same person each and every day.
Trustee, well, I'm gonna try, uh, trustee, uh, Bell, are you sure? Trustee Bell?
Can you tell me what audit we're fixing to start?
With who?
What year audit we're fixing to start?
Twenty-twenty-one, I think it is.
Uh, so we're fixing to go into twenty-three, twenty-four. So now we'll be three years behind.
We've been, always been three years behind. Sometime more than that.
Before the departure of the last person, she said we were fixing, we were ready to start. Well, starting in April. Well, guess what? And that's before talk termination began. And, and, and it's more like, he said, she said, garbage. But, and nobody knows what the, right hand don't know what the left hand is doing. You're here every day, and you can't tell, you can't tell a, 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 a new person who's doing a bank rec. We used to have one person designated for bank recs.
Who was?
You'd be that one person designated for bank recs.
Assistant Finance Director.
Who was that?
Boy, I'm not supposed to say names, very...
You already said names.
I didn't say a name one.
Is that your comment, that you, that, I mess with, okay, I see everybody who wants a trustee comment, okay. I was okay. Like I said before, person that was doing this, and you had answers, you're no longer here.
You don't like this when the shoes on the other foot, huh?
Pardon?
You don't like this when the shoes on the other foot?
What's on the other foot?
I seem to remember, this, this man, L.
So what's it got to do with your...
I'm just asking, you, you, I don't wanna talk about, shut up.
I don't talk like that, and you don't gotta look that way. So that's all you got to say? Thank you. Trustee Grant. Okay. I'll ask for a motion going to executive session. I can't hear you. Oh, yes, I can, I'm sorry. Um, I do have a few, I made a few, uh, announcements. The baseball sign-up is ongoing at the community center. They're signing up for baseball every day between six and eight P.M. at the community center. Please come by, they'll sign up for, uh, the baseball program. The Easter egg hunt, annual Easter egg hunt is on April eighth, starting at one P.M., right behind the community center. And SEDA is coming to Village Hall, um, to the senior center, which across the hall, April twenty-fourth, at nine A.M. to twelve P.M., and these both on Monday, May twenty-second, from nine A.M. to twelve P.M. Anyone that's familiar with SEDA, they help, they have programs to help, um, the residents, homeowners, whoever it may be, uh, for different areas. Could be for utility building, it could be for food, it could be for a lot of different things. And they do have, and, um, I think sometimes they give them telephones. So that's what I have. I'll ask for, um, I ask for a motion to go into executive session, and please state why. No. No. I mean, we, we say, we, we live around here all the time, like, there's been, there's been a minute. Okay. I may ask for a motion in a second, and I need to know why. Moved by trustee, uh, Williams, second by trustee Bell. Madam Pluck, please call the row.
Trustee Coleman? Yes. Trustee Dinkowski? Yes. Trustee Williams? Yes. Trustee Bell? Yes. Trustee Ryan? Yes. Trustee Coleman? Yes.
Motion's carried.
You don't think that you don't have to tell us?
Hey, Eric, Eric, you don't, you don't need my explanation, just as fast, what you said? You don't think you have to keep us in the dark, no, no, what did you guys say? You have to warn us, not, what did I say? You don't think you have to, what? What, what did you guys say? You said you had to calm down, what? What was you back there? Send your ass out.
I will say this to you, Mr. Mayor. It's gonna depend on this, it's gonna depend on when you come out of the technical room, you listen to your parents, and so you may wanna make the progress, you're leaving your mom.
Thank you, ma'am.